And you are live and good to go.
Mayor Triolo at six o'clock and we're live.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this Thursday, August sixth, City Commission Budget Work Session Number Three to Order, and ask the clerk to call the room, please.
Mayor Pam Triolo.
Here.
Vice Mayor Andy Amaroso.
Here.
Commissioner Scott Maxwell.
Here.
Commissioner Omari Hardy. I see he's here, and Commissioner Herman Robinson.
Here.
If everyone would please rise for the pledge led by Commissioner Maxwell.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, to our citizens, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Very much. We'll move right into it. We've got a presentation of operating budget plan for fiscal year 2021. City Manager, did you want to start, or the Finance Director Bruce?
Yes, Madam Mayor, if I could. Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. I appreciate this opportunity to come for you to give you the latest overview of the budget process. And I just want to stress here and provide some context for the presentation that the Finance Director Bruce is going to be giving to you to go over these numbers. But in the larger context, we need to appreciate that the whole country and all the cities are going through really strained economic forecasting for the coming year. It's only been, what, five months now that we've been grappling with the COVID-19 and the impacts. And one of the impacts that we're having to grapple with as an organization is projecting our revenues to be in the sweet spot of being realistic and providing for the money that we need to operate and to provide the programs and the things that you want us to do. But to do it in a way that really recognizes we don't really have a lot of certainty about the future. So we've approached these numbers very conservatively on the revenue side. And this is something I want to stress is not unique to the city of Lake Worth Beach. Everybody is going through this, all our peers across the country. It's unfortunate, but it does have an impact. And to kind of give you a little bit of an idea on this budget presentation, if you looked at the revenues that we projected from FY nineteen to FY twenty, and if we were able to magically take that number and do the same increases in the shared revenues that we get from the state and all the various sources, and project into the revenues in the FY twenty-one budget, the difference between that number of what would have been considered sort of normal to where we've had to kind of been shocked into the new reality, were about an $800,000 difference. Just in those categories of the shared revenues. So we're grappling with that in these numbers, and there's some other issues that we need to appreciate as well. And that's our property valuation did see an increase, which is based on property values. It's lagging number, but we did see an increase. We do have projected in here some interesting numbers that are relating to projected building projects that will be coming online next fiscal year. So the Building Department has had some increases there. The PBSO contract is at zero. The sheriff has requested a zero percent increase. Meanwhile, we've had some issues with our pension costs based on the old Lake Worth beat, or at that time, Lake Worth Police and Lake Worth Fire. We're still dealing with the pensioners who are in that program. And that's an increase there. And we have other things that we have to grapple with, with our employee base. You know, we have three unions, and in the unions, we had negotiated three-year contracts with a percentage of three percent increase. We're in that as well. And other issues that we're going to be grappling with in the budget is how the outfalls of the suspension of utility shut-offs and the impacts that finally washes out. But we just don't know. We just don't have a handle on all these projections. So we're trying to be as conservative as possible, and it's created some shortfalls. Stress again that this is very much a work in progress. What we're doing as we keep honing the budget, and I give a lot of credit to the finance staff. Bruce has some new folks on board with Andre and Yannick, and other folks that he's been able to bring on board here recently, and they're, you know, diving in with both hands, as well as the departments. And the departments, while we're going through a budget process, which is pretty arduous, you know, we've had to deal with things like, well, obviously, the COVID response that we're all in. Then we had Isaias hit us this last, well, it didn't hit us, it went past us, but we had to plan for it and activate. I love the term that was coined for having two emergencies at the same time when you have a COVID-19 and a hurricane. It's called a COVID cane. So that's what we call Isaias now, is the COVID cane. We picked that up from the county emergency management folks. They do have a sense of humor, believe it or not. And also in the finance side of the house, as we've been grappling to get these numbers honed and gleaned, they've been doing the, you know, wrapping up the financials for the city, the audit, working on the bond issue that was just issued. I sent an email out this not too long ago on the results of the sale of the bonds. And there was a lot of time, effort, and energy and focus put in different areas. So our next steps is to take, after this meeting tonight, go back with the departments, do several more gleaney and cleaning up of the figures to go into the STANTEC modeling presentations. And right now, we had that scheduled for the twenty-seventh of this month. And you're very familiar with the STANTEC modeling and that process. It's something that we're very comfortable, and it's a good tool for getting down to the nitty-gritty before we get into final numbers. So I appreciate your attention, appreciate your patience. And with that, I'd like the Finance Director to go in and start the presentation, and then we can answer questions. Mayor, probably best if we did it by each fund, if we could focus on any questions and answers after his presentation with each fund. So with that, Bruce, if you're okay, Madam Mayor, you can proceed.
Thanks, Bruce.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Mike, for the introduction. If you can present the there we are. So before you is a PowerPoint. And I know there are a lot of slides. And I'll try to move through them relatively quickly, but make sure that we hit all the high points. We're going to go through all the major funds, as outlined, the General Fund, Building Permit Fund, Beach Fund, Code Remediation, Electric Water, Local Sewer, Golf, Stormwater, and Refugees. Understanding that there are going to be more weight given to particular funds than others. As Mike noted, we try to present a conservative budget, especially on the revenue side, but also on the expenditure side. But speaking on the revenues, we had conservative revenue assumptions. And even though we do have those conservative assumptions baked into the budget at this time, we also are going to have to be flexible moving forward, depending upon what the COVID impacts are going to be. And we're going to be, we're going to have to be able to initiate coping strategies throughout the year, again, depending upon the magnitude of the event. There's a marginal one percent overall total growth, revenue growth of two forty-five. That's all revenues in the General Fund. And I'm just talking right now on the General Fund itself. We try to provide a level service budget at this juncture, and recognizing that there are increases throughout the budget, the major drivers being wages, health, and pension benefits, and then IT. And we'll get to those increases as we move through the budget presentation itself. And then the net revenues over expenditures. We'll review that at the end of each fund. So if you can turn to page four. These are the primary primary revenue categories. The avalorm taxes went up $638,000. That's a six percent increase overall. Again, very healthy, I think, especially compared to other communities within the county. There's a decrease in other taxes, permits and fees decline $92,000. Shared revenue, two hundred and seventy-eight, and other revenues and transfers increased by $130,000. So again, net-net of about $245,000 overall. Next slide, please. If you, the presentation here is just really comparing budget 2020 compared to 2021. These slides are pretty consistent throughout the presentation. And again, you'll see that the avalorm went from ten point six up to eleven. That was a $600,000 increase. Taxes, other, decrease, permits and fees. This, again, the same information, just in chart form. Next slide, please. On the expense side, and you'll see some of the expenses that we were talking about increasing. The general government went up $770,000. Community sustainability increased by two hundred and seventy-two. And I should step back a little bit. The presentation, to give you an idea of where the city has come from, provides a fiscal year sixteen thousand, fiscal year two thousand and sixteen actual, two thousand seventeen actual, to eighteen actual, the nineteen actual, the budget for twenty, and the budget for twenty-one request. And then the difference or the change column is just fiscal year twenty-one compared to fiscal year twenty. The public safety contract, as the City Manager noted, does not have an increase, level funded at thirteen million, three hundred and eighty-two thousand. Where we are getting some pressure points is the Public Safety Pension. That's both the police and the fire. The police went up over $700,000, and the the fire went up, the difference over three hundred, three hundred thousand. But you'll see, just in those two pension plans, total costs, required contributions, went up one point one million dollars. And that also does not speak to the city's own pension trust, which also had a increase. Public Safety Operating Budget, marginal increase of $1,000. Public Services increased approximately eighty thousand. Leisure Services, two hundred and thirty-two, non-departmental, hundred and eight. And again, total expenditures increased by two hundred and two million six. As Mike noted, we're going to have to go through with a little bit fine-tooth comb in preparation with STANTEC, and these numbers will be honed much more. And that analysis will be forthcoming in the next week or two. Next slide, please. This just gives you an overall presentation, whereas the previous slide was by program, this slide is really by category. Those categories being wages, benefits, and operating expenditures. Wages went up five hundred, I'm sorry, four hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. That's primarily because of the three percent increase overall. Benefits went up one million and five. That includes the increases in the police and fire categories for a subtotal of two million dollars, in that, those two categories. Then the operating expenditures went up $572,000. About $450,000 of that. I shouldn't say that, because that's all funds. But a big increase for operating expenditures are the contributions back to the IT Internal Service Fund. Their expenditures are going up, and they need to be spread throughout the different departments/funds. So there's an increase in that. Next slide, please. So again, same information, just presented in graphical form. The operating expenditures twenty-two, twenty-three million dollars, benefits of around eight million and nine million respectively, and the wages, five point five and six million dollars respectively. Next slide, please. This slide, we talked about a little bit in the prior presentation, but it tries to reflect what are the controllable costs versus non-controllable costs. And this provides that information. If you take a look at the top row, and I'm just going to go to fiscal year twenty-one, the top row is the total budget, thirty-nine million dollars. And then you subtract out the uncontrollable cost, non-controllable cost. The one million one for the general employees, the police being three point five million dollars, the fire is three point four million dollars. And as a pause, right, remember those pension costs are a lot of those costs are driven by the liability. And that liability, we have to pay not only the pay-go amount, or what we actually pay out on pension costs, we also have to pay down those unfunded liabilities. And you can see, again, just with those numbers, that category of pension costs went up almost one point three million dollars between those three categories. Again, the police service plan did not have any increases. Then we pay utilities. There was actually a decrease, but again, one point four million dollars of dollars go into those utility costs. Property insurances of approximately $590,000. And then transfer payments are part of the budget, but are moved forward to different funds of one point nine million dollars. You total all that up, and that non-controllable cost equal point four point five million dollars of the fund, leaving controllable expenses of thirteen point nine million dollars. So what to see can actually control in any one given period or operating cycle is that number. Not to say that there may be other numbers in the uncontrollable or non-controllable expenditure categories, but that's a multi-period, multi-year analysis. You know, for example, you know, the pension plans are contractual. Those changes would have to be negotiated, et cetera, et cetera. So again, thirteen point nine million dollars of controllable costs compared to twenty-five point five million dollars of non-controllable costs. Next slide, please. And again, just a graphical representation. And through the years, it's been pretty consistent. You can see that the, starting in two thousand and sixteen, working through twenty-one, the controllable costs are right around thirty percent. They're growing marginally each fiscal year, and the non-controllable expenses, sorry, around seventy-one percent, and have come down to about sixty-five percent. So I think that's important to reflect this, as more costs are becoming categorized as controllable expenditures. Next slide, please. So overall, what does this mean to the bottom line of the city? Well, the revenues, again, are projected to come in at thirty-seven million dollars, and net change over last year of two hundred and forty-four thousand. If you look back to fiscal year nineteen to twenty, that went up over a million dollars. So, you know, totally, or definitely a different outcome for fiscal year point one, than the expenditures are thirty-nine million. So overall, we're looking at a net revenue deficit at the time being at approximately two point zero three six million dollars. And that concludes the General Fund presentation. So Madam Mayor, if there are any questions on the General Fund.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Okay, hold on. Silvina, who's up first? Commissioner Hardy, you're up. Unmute.
Sorry, I was making sure there's not cleaning folks around me while I'm talking. Okay, so I have some questions. These, this might be three variations on the same question, Bruce, so, you know, let me know. And I just want to go back to the assumptions, because those are important. So you said that, you know, we're making conservative revenue assumptions. But if we realize impacts, and I'm imagining that's continued impacts from COVID-19 into the twenty-one fiscal year, that we will need to initiate coping strategies. So I guess, you know, my question is, to what extent do these conservative projections factor in continued impacts from COVID-19? Obviously, there's a shortfall in what we expected to be collecting, you know, right now. And so when you made these conservative revenue assumptions, to what extent did you project these shortfalls that we're experiencing here, monthly, weekly, whatever, into the twenty-one fiscal year?
Well, the, that bullet point really is to emphasize that we don't know the duration or the depth of this situation. We have basically, compared to last year, taken an eight hundred thousand dollar haircut, which is, I think, a pretty conservative approach. But that's not to say it's going to stop there. And if it doesn't stop there, then we're going to have to continue to analyze this. I think this is going to be, unlike prior years, where revenue streams are pretty much measurable. We haven't dealt with a COVID-type situation before. We've dealt with situational hurricane interruptions and that type of situations. But they're measured in weeks versus months. So I'm just trying to emphasize that we need to be diligent in our management as we move forward, and depending upon, and hopefully, we move out of it, right? I think that's what everybody's hoping for. But we're just going to have to be measured as we move through it.
You have a follow-up?
Yeah, I have a few. So I get that you made a projection of, you know, you know, I don't want to say sells our revenue collection short, but, you know, that basically leaves about $800,000 on the table from what we typically would have been able to expect. And so I'm asking, to what extent does that $800,000 reduction, projected shortfall, you know, whatever you want to call it, to what extent does that $800,000 anticipate continued impacts of COVID-19? So, and, you know, the way I'm conceiving of it is, you know, we projected to be collecting a certain amount of money by this time this year. So we're experiencing a shortfall, right? So how much is that shortfall that we're experiencing on a monthly basis? And if this continues, how many months do we have before that $800,000 buffer that you built in is eaten away?
Well, I wish I could say it's linear, but it's not linear.
Seasonal, there's yeah.
Yeah. Excuse me. So Commissioner, the best way I can answer that is we're going to have to look at this on an ongoing basis, on a monthly basis, and do a true-up, if you will, on a regular basis, and see how certain revenue categories are being impacted. Again, that bullet is just to provide the awareness to you all that we do have to, nobody has a crystal ball. And it's hard to say, I have three months, four months baked in.
Right. I mean, you know, these are projections, you know, they're not. So I'm just trying to get a sense of, you know, obviously, you know, so far this year, we're not collecting what we expected to collect. Has that difference amounted to about $800,000, you know, so far this year?
Well, this is just General Fund. Mind you, this is not all the other funds, electric and utilities. And so it's creeping up to those numbers. You know, a lot of the numbers are, though, are intergovernmental. They're coming in from the county. They're taxes and that sort of thing that are passed down through to us. And what we've been told is that those numbers could be decreasing by over ten, fifteen, thirty percent. So again, it's, you know, we're trying to it's like trying to negotiate. You don't want to get too overly conservative, because again, that's an eight hundred thousand dollar haircut. And, you know, on the flip side, you don't want to be too draconian either. So there's a middle ground that we're trying to take to knowing that we're going to have to manage it, knowing that we're going to have to keep an eye on it. Unlike other years where your revenue streams are pretty much, you know, they should come in pretty close to what you're budgeting. This is just going to take a little bit more oversight on an ongoing basis to make sure that those numbers are coming on a regular basis. And that we don't have to make a mid, you know, mid-year course direction. What we don't want to do is, you know, put the budget to bed, and then six months, seven months, eight months down the road, then take a look at it during the budget process for fiscal year twenty-two and say, oh, we're not collecting what we thought. And by then, it's too late to make a course change. We really had to be diligent and just be doing it on a regular basis.
Okay, and just two other unrelated questions to issues about projections. Level services budget, does that, I mean, so, you know, that means that this budget anticipates no staff layoffs or anything of that kind?
Well, as you, the initial was a level service budget. Level services, again, providing the same level of service that we provided last year, the same programs, et cetera, et cetera. I think as we move forward, realizing that there's a $2 million General Fund revenue shortfall compared to the expenditures, we have to go through and, you know, put options on the table. And those considerations will be part of the STANTEC conversation.
Okay. And I guess, you know, what I'm getting at here is we kind of went through the same story last year, where we didn't have visibility, you know, we heard the term level services budget, but we didn't really have visibility as to as to what that meant in terms of, you know, that refers to the output, right? And I'm asking about, you know, the input here, which would be staff and things like, you know, hours to the library, things like that. So, and people do care about those things. And I care about those things, like, you know, so I would like to have some visibility as to what the real impact on whatever budget we pass will be before I can feel comfortable with it. Okay, and contribution from Lake Worth Electric into the General Fund this year is reflected in these revenue figures?
Yes, sir.
What's the amount of that contribution?
It did not change from last year. Let me get the specific amount for you.
I think he's, Commissioner Hardy, Madam Mayor, if I could, I think you're referring to the $300,000
Right. So, you know, you had a plan.
It wasn't affected this year.
Okay, okay. So we had a plan to reduce over a period of five years the contribution from Lake Worth Electric into the General Fund by about one point five million dollars, phased in over a five-year period, three hundred thousand at a time. So this year, we're taking a pause in that five-year plan?
Madam Mayor, yes, Commissioner Hardy. Madam Mayor, yes, Commissioner Hardy. And, and, and given the uncertainty of the future, um I can't project into the next year, but definitely this year.
Okay, and, and, and what exactly is the contribution?
Four point five million dollars.
Four point five, okay. All right, thank you, and lastly, um we talked about controllable versus non-controllable um expenditures. Um which I think is a, a useful way to look at this to educate the public because they think that we're playing with money that we, that we're not really playing with. Um and, and some things I, 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 I see in this non-controllable um or uncontrollable category, um pensions um which are, you know, commitments that we've, that we've made, um water, you know, utility, you know, so, you know, so on. Property liability, insurance, transfers, past through payments, um. But our, for example, our, our contract with PBSO um implies a, you know, a certain officer count, it implies a whole suite of services. And I'm wondering to what extent is that truly uncontrollable? I mean, at the end of the day, that's still a policy decision for this board, right?
If, Madam Mayor, if I could answer that, um since this has been a um data point uh set that we've generated each year for many years, um any of those items technically you could um crack open at some point. Uh we provide this because there's never been any specific direction to try to um change any of those. They're contractual, as you mentioned. And um any resolution would be something that would take time over years to, to fix. So we've generally, for the sake of the discussion over focusing the commission on um looking at the general fund budget in terms of um size of commitments that we've made to the things that you generally think of in general government outside of public safety that we do. And it, it really demonstrates that those major commitments are two-thirds of our general fund budget. Whereas all the other things that we do in the general fund, whether it's the leisure services or the, the, the general government kinds of operations, takes up about one-third. It, it, it's not a hard, fast rule, I didn't want you to think that, but it is definitely something that we've used in the past, and these categories have remained the same. Uh but that helps you understand why we, we do that. Whatever y'all direct me to do, obviously, we'll do. But at this point, you know.
You know, in previous years, I probably would not have s- tried to adjust anything in this quote-unquote uncontrollable cost category. Um but there have been events in, you know, recently that, you know, make me question the assumptions that I had about how necessary it is for us to spend, you know, thirteen and a third million dollars on um, you know, our contract with PBSO. Obviously, we want to have a very good contract with them, obviously, we want to have enough uh law enforcement in the city. Um but I, I think probably until this year, you know, I, I would have unthinkingly assumed that whatever we have is enough and that more is always needed. Um and um, you know, for the sake of this conversation, I, 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 I think we should, we should um at least a- attempt to see whether we can spend some of those dollars differently um in the public safety category, that, you know, there might be different ways to, to, you know, make the community safe. Um, okay, those are my questions for the general fund, thanks.
Yeah, so your hand up. Did you, did you put your hand down, Vice Mayor?
I did, all my questions were answered, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I just want to remind the people that are watching at home too that the, the contract with PBSO did not change from last year to this year, there was no increase. But when we're looking at the P uh pensions, when it says for um police and for fire, those are pensions from our former owned Lake Worth PD Department and Lake Worth Fire Department. Those are still pension obligations to those, the, the former. That is not for our current Palm Beach County Fire Rescue and for PBSO. I don't want anyone to get confused to think that those increases are to our contracts with county. Vice Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, can you hear me? Can you, can you hear me? Okay, I'm just kind of curious since the comments we just made about the, the sheriff's contract. Um I just want clarification from uh Commissioner Hardy, is he suggesting that we redistribute, if you will, money from the sheriff's contract uh to some other area of the city?
Absolutely, well, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm saying that we should consider it. Um I'm saying that we should, yeah, I'm, I, uh, 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 thank you for recognizing me, Madam Mayor. Uh and the question is whether we should consider taking a portion um of the three point, thirteen point three million dollars um which, which represents, I believe, close to thirty-five percent of our general fund budget um that we project for this year. If the question is whether we should ask ourselves whether we should spend thirty-five percent of our budget on PBSO, um, yeah, so I, I, you know, I, I think we should question that. I think we should ask ourselves, are there other ways that we can make the public safe um and also uplift the public and potentially provide services to the public um to, to kind of solve some of the root issues of, 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 of crime and criminality that we hear discussed? Um, yeah, that's, that's what I'm asking. You know, I, I think people all around the country are, are asking themselves whether we spend too much on law enforcement, on policing, and not enough on servicing the community. And I, I want to make sure that that question is asked in, in, in this city hall because I, 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 I think it's relevant. Obviously, the goal is public safety, but there are different tools to get there. And I think that we haven't thought creatively or imaginatively enough about how to make the public safe. The answer has always been, and I've been guilty of this myself, more deputies, more law enforcement, um more things from the punitive and penal side of the equation. Um where, but, but, but we're not addressing um the other issues, the root causes. And so, yes, I, I'm saying that that's something that we should consider and, yeah.
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor, can you still hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, you know, with all due respect, this sounds a great deal of what Commissioner Hardy is sharing with us is the same talking point just being used around the country to defund the police. And um I don't think we need to, to have that conversation, I'm not willing to have a conversation about defunding the police here in uh Lake Worth Beach.
Thank you. Let's move on to the next agenda, I thank you very much. Not going to have political conversations, we're talking budget, let's stick to the budget, please move on, thank you so much, moving on to the next item, thank you. Next item, Bruce?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you, if we can turn the uh
Yes, sir.
Um.
Let's just move on with the budget, we have a long night.
Well, I, I, I would like to, 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 to state, you know, my, my, my point of inquiry here.
Um, what is your point of inquiry?
Is, is, is the rule that you're positing about not having a, a political conversation? Um, can you flush that out for me, please, so that I can understand it going forward throughout this budget workshop?
We're moving on.
Is, is that a no?
No, I, I, I just think you have, you have a calculated view of everything that you say and bring up from the dais because you're in a political election cycle right now. And I really don't want to talk, I, I don't want your, your bullet points that you're, we're gonna see on your next flyer to permeate around here right now and references, if you want to have a talk about defunding the police officers, let's put it on the next agenda. And we'll talk, we're in the budget process right now, can we just get the numbers? Let them report the numbers, see where we're at and work on the budget, please. That would be really great.
I
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Any little, any little help I can give, I graciously give it. Bruce?
Madam Mayor?
Madam Mayor, my hand was up.
Commissioner Robinson?
Thank you. Um, yeah, this, the conversation uh about uh bettering the, the quality of life in Lake Worth is, is, shouldn't be considered a political conversation. It should be considered a uh, uh make the city better. And uh to, to accuse somebody of, of, of an attempt to at least have a conversation about better spending our money isn't a political conversation. Uh, you know, I, I just, I, I think that's um as, as political as you can get when you accuse somebody of being political when they want to talk about uh making a, a better expenditure of money. Uh, I would love to see our national defense budget uh cut to uh spend better on education and uh quality of life. Uh and it's, it's that kind of thing that we avoid because uh it's easy. Uh I want to thank the sheriff for not uh coming back with an increase, he has the right to do so. But I, I, I look forward to sometime being able to have a conversation about making our city better rather than accusing people of, when they have a thought process of being political, thank you.
No, no problem, I, I, it was hard for me not to do it because I saw he had the Go Omari on, so, you know, we're not supposed to wear political things during, during our meetings, so I just, you know, I'm, I'm just calling it as this, you know what, let's just move on, okay? Let's move on, we have rules for a reason, let's go.
Madam Mayor?
Please.
Okay, uh starting with the, the um slide twelve, um this is
Point of, point of, point of inquiry, I'm sorry, so we are in a budget workshop. The question that I raised pertains quite obviously to the budget. And I'm wondering if we're not allowed to discuss that question, which is a budget question in a workshop about the budget, when would it be more appropriate, Madam Mayor, to discuss such a question?
Well, right now is a budget report that they were showing us because this is a moving process that we do every year the same exact way, for the most part. So I was just having that, if you want, I thought if you really want to bring that up as an issue, you should bring it up as an item that we could actually spend the time on in a regular commission meeting and get public input on it. Because right now in budget workshops, we don't have public opinion, we don't have public comments, I'm sorry. So I thought that if we're gonna talk about something as big as that, we should have public comment available from people in this community as to how they feel about it. Um you just making a statement and, and saying what you want to say about it without having input from the community um or the ability to comment um is just not helpful for us making a decision because we don't represent ourselves here, we represent our constituency. And, you know, something as important as that, I would hope that we would, we would count on them to uh voice their agreement or, or disapproval.
Point of inquiry, Madam Mayor. Um if, uh, uh, you know, this is um a budget workshop, we often talk about things that we think should happen with the budget in a budget workshop. Um we have never let the lack of public comment in a budget workshop stifle discussion about the budget um before um today and and, and, but if, if you're concerned about public comment, isn't there, when the budget is approved, uh, isn't there a series of hearings, public notices? And that, that would certainly be a very appropriate time for the public to weigh in on, on any decisions that we have made or, or, or inputs to the budget up to that point? Is it, is it not true that there will be an opportunity for public comment at the end of the day with the budget?
Yeah, but you're talking a policy discussion as opposed to a budget discussion. And I would prefer to have a policy discussion in the middle of a policy meeting, not in the budget meeting. What are you gonna change at this, at this point right now, other than talking about how you feel about something, what are you gonna change in the process?
Well, I think that gets to the broader point of what's the purpose of a workshop. Um, the purpose of a, of a workshop is to have these sort of broad discussions about things before you're kind of put on the spot to take a vote, right? And so, you know, you kind of want to feel your way around the issue, hear your, you know, thoughts of all your other colleagues. Um and kind of throw things out there, that's the point of a, of a workshop, is when you throw things out there, ideas.
I've been here for a few years, I understand.
So, so given that, that this idea is a budget idea, um and obviously, all budget ideas are policy ideas also, but, but I'm, I'm talking about the budget here. You know, I, 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 I'm just struggling to find a more appropriate time to talk about the budget than in a budget workshop. Even if, for example, you felt this was about defund the police, which I didn't say, Commissioner Maxwell used that slogan. Um, even if you felt that way, that's still an obviously budgetary item. So I, I, I don't know how it would be inappropriate or political to bring that issue up here in a workshop about the budget.
You've been nothing but since, for the last several months, sir, but let's move on, okay, let's move on, thank you. Bruce, oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, Commissioner Maxwell, did you have something? Thank you so much.
Madam Mayor? All right, um, so slide eleven, um again, same information. So, uh, very short presentation on the building permit. Um overall, the building permit is projected to um recognize one point seven million dollars in revenues. Um wages, benefits, uh and operating expenditures are projected to um be, be one point seven million dollars. Also, a seven hundred and thirty thousand dollar increase. Um but with a break even point of about one thousand five hundred dollars. Um so unless there's further discussion, I recommend moving on to the next um, to, but, next fund, please. Again, same presentation, beach fund, um a little bit more conversation, um the parking revenue, this is again one of the um COVID um type impacts. Um a decrease, projected decrease of the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in revenues from two point six million dollars down to two point four million dollars. Um pool and beach relatively um even uh ten thousand dollar increase at a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Parking fines increased to um two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars or a twenty-five thousand dollar increase. Investment income um increasing to uh thirteen thousand. Um and if you look back, some of this is projected um based on actual prior year actuals. So, for example, the investment income is going up to thirteen thousand dollars. Um because the trend, trend is moving in that direction. The rentals, um nine hundred and seven thousand dollars, other income, um five thousand dollars. And then again, overall total sources, three point seven million dollars or a two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollar decrease. Next slide, please. Um, the expenditures by category. Um, parking um has a decrease of twenty thousand dollars um down to seven hundred and two thousand dollars, the casino building um an increase of thirty-eight thousand dollars, up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The ballroom decrease of approximately fifteen thousand dollars. Pool, no change, the beach, um thirty-six thousand dollar um increase. Um primarily the maintenance, beach park, a three thousand dollar decrease. The pair, uh twenty-six thousand dollar increase, again, uh primarily maintenance and other um eighty-five thousand dollars, um or a twenty-five thousand dollar increase. Overall increase of approximately eighty-five thousand dollars. Again, this is by program, if we turn to the next slide, you can see where um from year to year, um these numbers have not changed much. Um over, overall, uh, as a percentage and or as, uh, you know, real dollars. Next slide, please. Oh, I'm sorry, if you, go, go back one slide, please. Um, thank you. Um, the expense comparison by category. Um, the slide to the right, you'll see that the wages increase approximately um thirty thousand dollars. Benefits increase about fifty thousand dollars. And um the operating expenditures approximately two thousand dollars. Um relatively marginal increases throughout those categories. Next slide, please. Problem being, because of the um change in the revenue estimate, Problem being, because of the change in the revenue estimate, the total sources of revenue has gone down to $200,000. Total uses have gone up $85,000. So we're projecting a net outflow of a $300,000 revenue deficit. This being said, good news, as part of the bond issuance that we did today, we're going to be able to drop debt service expenses back to the beach fund. So I expect that this issue by will resolve itself primarily through the restructuring of that debt. And then the graph on the bottom, you'll see that over the time horizon from 2016 through 2021, your your revenues and your expenditures met pretty closely in 2018. 2019, net sources increased. But overall, the projection going out, and this is what's useful to this, and we'll get more into it with the StanTech model. If we continue the trend, the fund balance, that gray line is going below zero. So we're using, we're spending more money than we're making, if you will. So it's just going to put pressure on those, on that fund. So we're going to have to take a, as we move forward, some type of action to either increase revenues or hold the expenditures. Madam Mayor, that concludes the beach fund presentation, unless there's any questions.
Just one question for you. Does the, I guess that's just a replacement. I was thinking about the new restaurant they're replacing. But, okay, I understand it's kind of a swap in regards to expenses. Old and new, okay. All right, Commissioner Robinson, you had your hand up. Did you take it down? You're muted. You're muted.
If there's any budgeting for a public-private partnership in the future, how that's going to occur?
No, sir. The this presentation is pretty much, again, a level service budget from last year using the same operating conditions. If we do have a private, private partnership go forward, we'll have to redo this, the budget.
So when we look at a budget, are we considering the loss of income when we don't look at income, potential income?
Well, again, if if the business model today is that we own and operate the the beach fund, that's and that's what is going to be appropriated. Typically, if you come through and develop a partnership, that's going to have a, it's a new business model. And that business model has has an associated budget with it. And a new budget, depending upon those constraints and or assumptions, will be you'll have a mid-year or midterm budget amendment to to codify, if you will, that that new program.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Hardy.
Thank you. Bruce, you said, so you projected a $300,000 shortfall, but then you said that you felt that that would take care of itself because we saved some money on debt service due to the bond issuance we have. To what extent is debt service in these expenditures here?
The not, we just got the new new bond information today. I don't know what the amortization schedules are. We did talk, and I did ask, broad picture, how the structure, because we talked about deferment of both principal and interest into fiscal '21, I mean, into '22. So for fiscal year '21, on the Series A piece, we're paying interest only. Nope, no principal. And on the Series B bond, which is the reimbursement of all the paygo, that's that $19 million piece, the taxable piece, the reimbursement piece. That includes the the beach fund reimbursement, that $6 million that was borrowed. We are pushing the principal and interest associated with that into fiscal year '22.
Oh, okay. So you're talking about that. You know, I get, you know, paygo is when we pay for capital expenditures, you know, as we go. We just, you know, cash that we have to have, okay. But the statement you made was about us saving money on debt service in the beach fund because we issued these bonds, which theoretically would replace some of the debt that we have at the beach fund and lower the debt service. So the debt, I was trying to get at what what debt and what debt service are you referred to when you're talking about the beach fund? You're talking about the money that the beach fund borrowed from the water fund, the capital fund, the self-insurance fund years ago?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that that's $6 million of borrowing. And so we were using the bond money that we just issued to pay the beach fund's debt or to, you know, replace the beach fund's debt to these other funds? Is that what you're saying?
Correct. The three pieces, the three sources of funds will be reimbursed. So the capital program or the capital fund will be reimbursed this year. The enterprise fund will be reimbursed this year. And the self-insurance fund will be reimbursed its share. And then there's a, there will be a 20-year amortization of those funds that will have to be paid back by the beach fund over that 20 years, okay? It addresses one of the issues at the the audit address where we didn't have a formal agreement, et cetera, et cetera. It cleans up all those loose pieces. And and then it reduces the annual amount that the that the fund will have to pay because it's over a 20-year period. And it will also, we're deferring that payment for fiscal year '21 and starting the amortization period starting in fiscal year '22. So there will not be a debt payment or will be a lesser debt payment, again, because I don't know what the amortization schedules are.
But it's certainly longer than what we had planned, you know, to the to the water and capital. Okay. But I, you know, I guess what I'm getting at here is, you know, when we talked about those bonds, we were talking about paying for projects that we needed to do right now. And it looks like we're using these bonds to pay for a project that happened a long time ago.
Oh, no, no.
Well, and to, you know, basically, we're refinancing debt from a project that happened a long time ago with bonds that we're issuing now.
On that piece, yes. But you're also are, you also are increasing your your working capital.
Sure, yeah. There are other things that we're doing, right? But at least some of what we're doing with these bonds is apparently refinancing our debt to ourselves here at the at the beach fund. And that that wasn't clear to me when we went for the bonds. And I was a little surprised to to hear that. Okay, so I guess that's that's how we're solving that problem.
Well, one of the overarching drivers to this was really cleaning up the balance sheet or trying to clean up the balance sheet, both on the liability side and on the fund balance side.
Yeah.
And this definitely accomplishes that that goal. I apologize if, you know, I what wasn't, I didn't describe the transaction to a way that was well understood. My sincere apology. But again, the overarching was get the debt between the funds cleaned up, get the fund balance in a place, you know, again, we're pulling in $19 million of fund balance to reimburse the paygo amount, which will definitely help the city's overall financial position. And and because that money is fund balanced, you can use it. You know, I would hold on to some of it because of the COVID and the the cash flow concerns and that kind of stuff. But on the other side, you can reappropriate those dollars for for purposes going forward.
Yeah, look, I'm not saying that it's a bad financial decision. I'm just saying it's it's something that we hadn't discussed that that this would be used to refinance this water capital fund and self-insurance fund debt. It was, you know, certainly, it's 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 and it's not an insignificant portion of the debt. You know, I mean, how much did we raise? Was it was it nearly $30 million?
$19 million of taxable and about $9 million, so about $28 million.
Yeah, I mean, that's like a fifth of of almost a fifth of what we, you know, I I I would, okay, all right, I just, that's a huge fact to learn about right now.
Yeah, it's good. Anytime you can reduce your debt, you know, and consolidate, it's like buying a house at at a 13% interest rate in 1980 something and then refinancing your mortgage at a lower interest rate to save money and to and to make more cash flow available for the city. It's really hard. I think this this whole conversation today is going to be really tough because we are in such an unprecedented time in regards to COVID. And we don't know, we really all would need, as Bruce said, a crystal ball to see into the future and how it's going to affect us and how much money we're going to need and where we're going to get hit with the biggest losses and what we're going to need to do them. And I think the smartest thing that you said, Bruce, was we're going to have to have budget, you know, have our budget workshops monthly, you know, even after our budget's done, just to watch it and to see what's happening because of the pandemic and everything else going on. I think this year is is going to be tougher than most. But I applaud you on it. And I'm good news on the bonds and I'm very appreciative. Commissioner Maxwell?
Thank you. I just wanted to thank Bruce. I know we talked about this and I really think that he explained it very well to me in our conversations, and I'm very happy with the final result. Thank you.
All right, let's move on. Next.
All right. Code Remediation Fund, again, relatively short conversation. Next slide, please. Here I tried to just reduce the number of pages and put everything on one page. Essentially, the code remediation, it's all program income. They're looking at $135,000 increase of up to $319,000. All the expenditures in this fund are in the operating category. There are no wages and or benefits. That those expenditures on the operating side are going up $95,500. So your total revenues increased $135,000. Total expenditures increased $95,000. So if you look at fiscal year '21 budget, 319 over 278 leaves us a positive cash flow or net revenues of $41,000. Pretty straightforward, but if there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Questions? Let's go, Bruce.
All right, next page, please. Page 22. Next one is Electric Utility Fund. We've been working very closely with Ed and Clyde out in electric. I suspect as we move forward, some of these numbers will change. And especially on the on the operating side relative to debt service as the as the utility bond, those final, those final covenants are agreed upon, bond covenants, the rates, et cetera, et cetera. So moving on to the charges for services. '21, fiscal year '21, is looking to be increased revenues of $1.5 million. Fines are level funded at $15,000. Investment income, an increase of $49,000. Again, that number, if we get the bond proceeds in earlier rather than later, that number will definitely change. Other sources are even at $14,000. So total income increasing $1.5 million over fiscal year '20 or from $61.5 million up to $63 million. Next slide, please. This slide provides an overview by program. Overall, again, total expenditures, if you look down at the bottom, are increased, are expected to increase $1.1 million. Customer service, increase of $800,000. The administration, $270,000. Engineering, $238,000. You'll see a net increase in power plant and a decrease in the power system operations. That's just a reclassification of expenditures. The Ed thought it more appropriate to classify the generation expenses in the power. Distribution, increase of $425,000. Meter shop, about $200,000. And then non-departmental, of $450,000. Again, for a total increase of $100, $1.1 million. Next slide, please. These are the expenses by category. Again, same number at the bottom, $1.19 increase. $500,000 increase in salaries, benefits, $160,000. And operations, $417,000. Now, and I should probably have said this from the get-go, these expenditures, overall expenditures, do not reflect the capital, any capital expenditures. That will be part of the capital conversation. Next slide, please. I apologize, the the graph to the to the left is a little messy. But it's just presentation of those those different categories. Again, I bring your attention to the two graphs or charts, two bar charts in the middle, the power plant and the power system operations. Again, that's just a reclassification of the expenditures. And then looking at the expenses by category, by and large, predominant expenses are definitely on the operating side versus the benefits and salaries. Next slide, please. So the electric fund, revenues over expenditures. The revenues are look are looking to increase again to 1.5. Expenditures increasing 1.1. But overall, again, fiscal year '20 to '21, the '20 budget is projected to be at $1.5 million net income. And the fiscal year '21 budget net income is looking to be coming in at 1.9. Again, remember that the conversation relative to future debt service has not been incorporated in that in these numbers on the expenditure side. So as those numbers become more definitive and we and we have a little bit more clarity of what those numbers will be, I expect that to be part of the StanTech conversation. The net income amount will be and the expenditure amount will be adjusted accordingly. Next slide, please. Okay, so that concludes the electric. Madam Mayor?
Yes, thank you. So does this, you said we're going to have to reevaluate. This doesn't include the numbers for for payments that we're missing, you know, for COVID and the shut offs? We haven't factored that into this?
No, I'll let the the director speak to that a little bit more. The the director speak to that um a little bit more um definitively.
As we have been monitoring.
Why why aren't you take the uh?
Ed, go ahead.
Mayor, Madam Mayor, if I may, uh, first of all, let me give a a shout out to Bruce and his team, particularly, uh, you know, Yannick and Andre new on board have been. Doing a lot of cleanup work on prior years and the current year. Um, we we do have collectively between the two teams more work to do on this, but it's come a long way. So. Uh, we're we're getting there on on getting these numbers straightened out. Uh, th- these numbers uh do not uh take into account the uh accounts or amounts receivable. Um, that are out there right now in arrears, uh, which is about seven hundred and eighty to eight hundred thousand dollars. That's currently out there for combined water, electric and sewer. Only speaking about sixty percent of that is electric, so that that's not in the in the budget for future years. We don't want to confuse future years budget and the debt, for example, that we could service with those earnings that that spin off of those budgets. Um, with revenues that might come in for prior years on 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 payment plans. So we don't want to artificial or think that our revenues are actually higher than than they are. So these these revenues that Bruce is working with are. Actual or based on actual uh cash revenues received this year. How we beat the budget this year and extrapolated forward using very conservative assumptions for a load growth and customer count growth.
Okay, thank you very much.
We're not plan, we're not planning on money that uh is owed to us right now, but we obviously want that money. It's important for the for the fund balance and we're not going to. There's no indication that the commission wants us to to walk away from it, but but it it's it's not padding the budget going forward.
Okay, Commissioner Hardy. You're muted.
Some of my questions were answered. Um. I I, you know, I'm I'm wondering, you know, we had many conversations about the importance of the five year. Plan to reduce the contribution from the electric to. The general fund and um. How important that was to the electric utility and to and to and to. Plans that we have to raise capital for our hardening program. Um, and I'm wondering to to what extent. Does that? You know, how is how is that going to be affected in the opinion of you, Ed, and you, Bruce? Um, you know, how is the fact that we're not reducing the contribution by an additional three hundred thousand this year? Um, affecting, you know, our ability to look good when we go out for for this, you know, for these uh debt proceeds that we want to bring in.
So if I may, Madam Mayor, address the question. Um, certainly anytime you ask a utility leader i- if he or she would like to have more revenue, they're always going to say, oh, sure, I'd like to have more revenue, right, or lower costs, absolutely. Uh, the context in which the decision was made to go from a four point eight million dollar contribution. To a four point five million dollar contribution was one of uh not necessarily, it wasn't wasn't there to help the utility meet current demands. It was there to help the utility build fund balance. We have, in fact, been been building our fund balance at a at a pretty good clip, and I believe that when you see the stand tech modeling. Because I I've done some of the modeling on my own ahead of what stand tech might do. Um, we're going to see that that the the working capital number is increasing well. So that decision was was made a year ago, right, to go from four point eight to four point five. Many things have changed in an intervening year, right? Uh, we've had a beat on the budget for revenues, for example. Even though we're on a in a COVID nineteen situation, uh, we've had additional revenues come online. Uh, we've had a beat on some of the line items, uh, or our capacity sales, uh, pole attachment contracts, which we bringing forward the AT and T contract the next meeting. Going into more detail, uh, control of expenses, uh, decrease of fuel costs. Uh, even though we've had to absorb a rather substantial rate increase uh from Florida Power and Light. That's been levied on us as well as every customer in the state of Florida, you know, not not just us. But uh, we've been able to absorb those things. So would I like to have an uh three hundred thousand dollars, yes, in in expenses, a- absolutely. But I think that, you know, when we take into account the fact that we're 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 part of a family of businesses here at the city of Lake Worth Beach. Um, you know, we'll we'll tighten our belts and 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 manage as best as we can if we're if if the city is able to uh to do with a a lower contribution. And we're certainly going to put that to good work and and help to finance things we need to do going forward. But um, for the moment, I think it's prudent to plan as if we're going to stay flat. And and then revisit that if if we go forward, if it becomes an issue going forward.
I'm sorry, uh, with a follow up.
Commissioner Hardy, go ahead.
Uh, you said we're we're beating the budget on revenue right now?
Yes, prior to COVID, um, we we got ahead, we we came in higher than budget on some of our uh revenues on on the commercial. And residential side, and then that's dropped off. Um, you know, we didn't get the high the high projections uh that we expected. So we run up on a very, very good path. And then that uh that beat, if you will, has been has been, you know, coming down. So we're eating into the uh the gains that we thought we would have. We budgeted very, very uh conservatively going into the new year, both on on revenues and expenses. And uh, some things went our way and uh and and we did well. Customers, we're using a lot more energy. Uh, energy still going at a pretty good clip, um, but we didn't get the growth. Uh, the the, you know, after COVID nineteen, after March, April, May. Um, the total energy volumes dropped off slightly in terms of how high they were getting. We're still almost flat. We're within a one or two tenths of a percent of what we did last year. But the early revenues came in a little bit higher and we haven't seen those eroded all the way back to zero or back to back to par, if you will, uh, on the budget, so. But so that's certainly, that's certainly a risk as as we continue, uh, because the the receivables are so are are so high.
Commissioner Hardy.
Yeah, uh, okay, so that that's interesting. I mean, so, you know, if we're beating on revenue. And if, you know, whatever losses we have with respect to COVID nineteen is just basically. Um, you know, lessening the amount of house money that we have, so to speak, right? Um, I I I I, we had a conversation a while back about. The moratorium. Um, and the picture painted as to why we had to end the moratorium and collect and. And, you know, do all of that was that, you know, we just, we just couldn't take it from a from a budgetary perspective, but. If we're if 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 we're beating our projections on the budget. Uh, still. Um. I I I I'm, there appears to be a dis- can you connect the two for me?
Sure, I'll connect it. There's and I'll say there's absolutely no disconnect. Uh, we never said that we were losing money. Uh, we've we've been ahead of the budget um and and performing well as we budgeted uh conservatively. Um, however, the early gains that we had to to beat the budget have been eroded by the non payments. Uh, that have come in also the decreased volumes of 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 energy. So we were, we were growing at a pretty good clip on energy and we and and send out to our customers. And we were going growing at a good clip on revenues. That basically stopped growing on energy growth and energy send out. And then the revenues started coming down, eating into the the surplus that we'd built on. But I remind everybody, I'm going to finish this point, I remind everybody that we're still in a in a in a negative fund balance position. So this beat on the budget. Was going to replenish the negative fund balance that we'd had from the prior years. So it it's not, it's not like we have extra money that we're looking around saying, what what do you guys want to do with it today? It it's going into rebuilding those fund balances and be rebuilding those minimum working capital amounts with stand tech is recommended. And it's and by the, I also reminded with, we've already paid for the product that was delivered to those customers. So we're we're out of pocket on those expenses.
So on the, right, on the on the fund balance point, you know, I just asked you a question about fund balance. Two questions ago about. The contribution from the electric to the general fund about how we intended to. Reduce that contribution in order to build fund balance. And your response to that question is, well, fund balance is building working capitals, uh, uh, you know, amounts are 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 building. That was two questions ago.
Right, and the three hundred thousand dollar decrease in contribution to the general fund helped to build fund balance.
Right, what, but. We're not doing an additional three hundred thousand this year.
We're going to stay flat at four point five million.
Right, so I.
How however, there are also many other line items of contributions that we make to the city that are going up outside of the general fund contribution.
Okay, so is is fund balance building? I mean, you know, a while back, you you know, two questions ago, you said, you know, working capital balances, you know, you know, those things are important. To people assessing our own, you know, financial security here, um, including ourselves, you know, that those things we're building. Um. If they're building and if we're ahead of budget, I'm I'm trying to connect those two facts with what was just stated that, you know, we have a negative fund ba-
So let me, let me clarify that then or 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 make it simpler for for everybody to to follow. Beating the budget i- is good. It means we're we're performing better. We we've tightened our belts. And 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 we're getting more revenue and lowering expenses, so we're be, we're beating the budget. That means that we have more money to put back into. Our fund balance, which was in a in a negative position. So the fact that we're beating the budget doesn't necessarily mean that we've erased the negative fund balance. The fund balance is going to be less negative, right? We're we're moving. In the correct direction by replenishing our reserves, if you will, or our bank accounts. Um, but and we're doing that faster than we thought because we've been able to beat the budget, right? So that's going into rebuilding the fund balances. So the the two statements are absolutely correct. Uh, they stand together or they stand separately. Fund balance is getting better and, yes, we we are ahead of the budget.
Let's not forget, we're in the middle of hurricane season two.
Right, and and correct, and the the budget is is um is an is an annual operating budget of of cash. And fund balance is more of a balance sheet type uh function which is being rebuilt. So the the two, to make the two statements side by side is is absolutely correct and it's true and the numbers show that.
I, you know, I guess, you know, my point is, um, it it feels like we're doing okay. And, you know, I I, you know, to the extent that it's not catastrophic for us. Um, to extend the same compassion, for example, that Fort Pierce's utility is extending to their customers. Right now, and um, you know, their moratorium, I think, goes through September. Um, you know, I I I I think we should, we should probably do that. And if we're talking about a budget workshop, I I think that's that's probably the time for that, you know. Um, when you, when I ask you the question about, um, you know, what we needed to do to look good to people who might lend us money, you talked about working capital balances. Which are, you know, the things that matter. They don't, you know, care so much about our accounting, you know, mechanisms, which is what fund balance is about. But if what you're saying is the thing that matters, which is working capital is is going up, increasing, building. Um, then again, that kind of gets, and and if what you're saying is fund balance doesn't matter so much. Um, then again, that kind of goes to the point that perhaps we could, um, you know, uh, uh, afford to extend uh that compassion to. Our residents. Okay, those are my questions and comments for this fund.
So Madam Mayor, if I if I may follow up on on one of the points that you made too with regards to hurricanes, yeah, yes, we we uh we we just dodged a hurricane, fortunately. Uh, many to our north were not so fortunate. Um, the hurricanes are expensive and they they do come at a significant uh impact to the utility and 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 other departments in the city, so. Um, just directionally, I can share that Irma was probably about a two million dollar uh ex- expense. Uh, so we need to have money ready to go for that. So while while I'm very happy to be in the position we're in right now, I I I know that, you know, um. You know, in the utility world, a hurric- the grim reaper of a hurricane lies just on the other side of the ocean for us, right? Um, or or maybe just twenty or thirty miles away some days. Um, we know that Dorian expenses were close to three million dollars and it just it just brushed us as well. So we have to be ready to absorb those. So uh it's it is important to build these fund balances, not just to beat the budgets, which which we we all work to do. But it's also important to build these fund balances so we can withstand these these shocks when they come at us. And that's why companies or outfits like like Stan Tech do recommend that we have that minimum of a three months working capital. And we've been working to rebuild that. So um, are we out of the woods on on hurricanes? Are we out of the woods on rebuilding the fund balance? No. But but we're certainly going in the right direction.
Thank you, and just off the record, great job during the storm.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I I ride on the shoulders of very good people.
Exactly. Great answer. All right, Bruce, let's move on to the next one.
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um. So if we can turn to slide number twenty nine, I believe. Um, and this is the um water fund. Water utility fund. Um. Pretty much, um, overall, um, total sources of funds are going down about two hundred thousand dollars. Um, the 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 big, the big decrease is the transfers um. And fund balance that decreased three hundred seventy thousand dollars. The charges for services, um, an increase of approximately fifty thousand dollars. And investment income of twenty eight thousand dollars. Um, and then. The impact fees going up about ninety thousand dollars and impact fees need to be changed. But um, the um, so overall, the. Fiscal year twenty budget of fifteen point nine million dollars. Um, is the revenues are projected to be at fifteen point seven million dollars. Next slide, please. Um, the expenses by uh program. Decreases um. Um, from fifteen point three million dollars down to fifteen point one million dollars. Um, the administration. Costs um decreasing three, three thousand dollars, pumping um a decrease of one hundred thirty five thousand. Treatment of three hundred sixty thousand hour decrease. Transmission and and distribution decrease of two hundred fifty one thousand dollars and then other expenses increasing um five hundred seventy thousand dollars. Next slide, please. Uh, th- this is a presentation on the by category. Wages going up um eight thousand dollars to two point five million dollars. Benefits being decreased approximately a hundred forty thousand dollars down to one point two million dollars. And then the other expenditure category decreasing forty six thousand dollars down to eleven point three million dollars. So the the overall budget, if you turn back, just give me a little bit more time. Um, the overall operating budget. Um, for fiscal year twenty at fifteen point three, again, down to fifteen point one, a decrease of a hundred seventy six thousand dollars. All right, now we can turn the slide. Um, again, a little messy, uh, the graph to the left. Um, but just comparing the different program income from year twenty to fiscal year twenty one. And then the uh expense comparison by category um for the same time timeframes. Next slide, please. So similar, the graph up top, um, and then the graph on the bottom. More of a linear graph, um, total sources of funds decreasing um. Two hundred thousand dollars, total uses of of funds going down a hundred seventy six thousand dollars. So the overall um net sources of reuses still um is strong, six hundred fifty five thousand dollar surplus. Um, and then you can see the graph on the bottom. Um, the. Starting in fiscal year sixteen, a gradual decline down to about, um, you know, the um three hundred thousand dollars. To the six hundred fifty five thousand dollars now. Um, so it's basically coming down from a high of three, three million dollars. Um, a lot of those funds were expanded on on capital, um, vis a vis the decrease. But um, so that's the overall presentation of the water utility fund, Madam Chairman.
Thank you so much. Any questions? Okay, we'll move on.
Okay.
You need you need some water there, Bruce? See, okay? You're going to be talking a lot today.
Yeah, I was drinking a coffee and it it was a French press and I think I drank more of the grounds than in.
I'm sorry about that.
All right, page thirty five, it was um, look at the local uh sewer. Permits and fees, um, really no activity, charges for services, um, no change. It's really. Um, pretty much carrying over the income of fiscal year two thousand and twenty. Um. Nothing, not not much to report upon. Next slide, please. Um, again, trying to combine, um, so the top half of the schedule is um program. Expenditures and then the bottom half being um category expenditures. So the administration um costs have increased sixty one thousand dollars up to four hundred fifty five thousand dollars. Pumping uh category has decreased twenty five thousand dollars down to six hundred forty thousand. Collection has decreased forty four thousand dollars down to one point three, one point four million dollars. And then other category um increasing a hundred twenty one thousand dollars to six point seven million dollars. So the overall um uses of funds. Have increased a hundred thirteen thousand dollars from nine hundred and ten thousand up to nine point two million dollars. And then on the wages or the categories of expenditures being wages, um, increase of thirty And then on the wages or the categories of expenditures being wages, increase of $31,000. Benefits increase, I mean decrease, $46,000 to $550,000. And then other expenditures increasing of $130,000 to $7.5 million. Again, net increase on the total expenditures from $9.1 to $9.2 million or $113,000 increase. Next slide, please. So again, your comparisons by programs, the administration pumping collection and other, and then by category wages, benefits and operating expenditures. Again, not a whole lot of significant changes. Next slide, please. And then the linear graph between the uses, sources and uses. Sources overall. Excuse me. What we're looking at is a $94,000 net decrease between the two or a $19,000 surplus for fiscal year 2020. Again, the expenditures and expenditures and revenues being relatively equal and net changes essentially a break even. Next slide, please. And that concludes the, yeah, local sewer. So if there's any questions on local sewer.
At this point, I don't see any hands up.
Roll, roll.
You want, can we take a quick bathroom break? Would you mind terribly? You mind?
No, I'm fine. Yeah.
Okay, let's do, thank you. Let's take a quick recess, folks.
How long is the recess?
Five minutes.
It's appropriate after doing the sewer fund.
Yeah, that's made me think of it. Okay, hold on. Everyone back? Tell me when you're ready. Here it comes. We're going live shortly, ladies and gentlemen. City Claire?
It looks like we're all here. I haven't heard any differently. So it's 7:44 and we're resuming.
Okay, just want to make sure we were rolling. All right, let's move on to our golf fund.
All righty, next slide, please. Overall, the charges for services, again, trying to compare the, put both expenditures and revenues on the same page. So charges for services predominantly the driving revenue source for this fund, $1.2 million. A slight growth of $28,000 in the charges, donations, $10,000. And that's basically, if you look, pretty much what we have received over the last three years. Total sources of income has increased $37,000 from $1.2 million to $1.253 million. And then the expenditures by program, again, the predominant program here being the golf course operations, some transfers, but a slight increase of $43,000, $44,000 up to 1.2 one, excuse me, 1.248 million dollars. Nets, sources over expenditures dropped a little bit, but again, just north of break even at $4.5 thousand. Next slide, please. So again, this is the presentation by category. Wages went up about $20,000 between the years. Benefits decreased about $5,000 between years. And then operating expenditures had a slight increase. Next slide, please. So that does it for the golf course operations. So if there are any questions?
So being any questions? Do I see any hands? No, none at this time. We can keep moving.
My hand is up.
My hand is up too.
Hand or what? But I was wondering if the donation was an anonymous donation or how do we figure donations into operations?
Well, it's a receipt of, it's a receipt of funds, so.
Madam Mayor, it's actually from a foundation, I believe, and I can't remember the name off it. Lauren might be on the call. Yeah, it's the same thing. Actually, there's a glitch right there. It should have been in the 2020 budget as well.
Texter Strong.
Okay, there, there's one. Okay. So it's a predictable year after year fund that pays in as a donation.
And we, we give them a notice of thank you? Good. That's it.
Ms. Mayor?
Um, yeah, real quick, Bruce, I personally would like to see, I know that the restaurant revenues are included in the overall, but I'd really like to see a separate line item here. I know that it's included somewhere else, but I'd like to see a separate line item here that actually shows the revenue or from the restaurant or the income that we're getting from the restaurant as a separate line item instead of in the actual golf course.
Yes, sir. I'll make that happen.
I just think it's clearer for people that, you know, the restaurant clearly is not the golf course. It is at the golf course, but it's in essence a separate entity.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I care of that.
Thank you. Commissioner Hardy? You're muted.
We've had conversations in the past about the golf course being one of those underutilized assets or one of those assets that, you know, is not producing to its potential as my colleague Commissioner Robinson says frequently. And, you know, to the extent that we have acres and acres and acres of waterfront property here in this city, which is only seven square miles, which means that we have a limited opportunity to earn revenue from ad valorem taxes, for example. I think we should consider making some strategic moves with that golf course. I know it's been whispered about for a long time about putting a portion of that golf course in play for a public-private partnership, in particular at the southern end of it. You know, I, you know, I'm happy that we got the $10,000 donation. It looks like that's what's keeping us, you know, above water, so to speak, this year. But there's the potential to do so much more with this property. And there's no better time to start that conversation with the community and to try to start it and finish it than in a time when people recognize the importance of not leaving financial opportunities on the table. So, yeah.
Okay, I do know that, I do know that the property's got deed restrictions on it and I think we had, city manager, did we have the city attorneys look at that back when? Trying to think.
Madam Mayor, the city attorney, along with our lobbying firm, is working. The deed language was indeed identified and having to go through DEP is that the, the deed language was indeed identified and having to go through DEP is the steps. We're starting with the local offices here, working up hopefully through eventually what would be a cabinet decision to remove that language. And then as Commissioner Hardy pointed out, it would most likely have to go to some form of a ballot question to put it towards any kind of a public private partnership. So it's something we've been working on. It's a little more difficult with some of the steps, but the golf course to the point that it teeters on a knife's edge as a business. If we had better recovery time on the play surface when we have rain events or tides, we lose a lot of rounds because of it, and the condition of the grass and the play surfaces are affected because it was built in twenties on dredged land and it sunk. And it's affected by the water and its location, but the, the location is a million dollar location. You can't play golf anywhere else like that.
Okay, did you have a follow-up, Commissioner Hardy?
Yeah, um, yeah, I recognize that there's a deed restriction on, on parts of the property and that to remove that deed restriction, we'd have to go through some processes that involve state government and cabinet officers here in the state of Florida. Um, I'm going to quote someone that I would rarely quote, and I'm going to quote something that he said to me in conversation when discussing this very topic. Ben Ellis is no stranger to anyone of us. And, you know, what, 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 what Ben said, and this was, you know, years ago, was, you know, why don't we ever consider just approaching the heirs? You know, we have a golf course and there's a deed restriction that, that says if we stop using it like a golf course, the property reverts, you know, the deed reverts to the person who donated the land to the city or to their heirs. And to the extent that heirs exist, and if this deed restriction thing is becoming a problem, a quagmire, or just something that's going to take a long time, you know, I wonder what's the value of simply finding out who these heirs might be and approaching them to see if we can make some sort of a deal with them. Yeah, I think there's value in approaching people and asking them how willing they are to engage us. You know, that's no mystery, given some meetings that we've had here, but, you know, I don't, I don't want to see this get mired down in a, in you know, bureaucratic processes at the state.
Madam Mayor, just to clarify, there are different types of restrictions across the property. I think the one you're talking about is mostly on the north end. This one, if I understand correctly, and talking to the attorneys and working on this, is a restriction that was actually in place by the state of Florida. It's not related to the family donation that you're referring to, is my understanding, the, the ten acres on the south end. So, but I can clarify that with the documents. I'd be happy to send them out tomorrow.
Yeah, I'd be interested in it as well. We should also be talking about too of, of, you know, some, some shoring up. There was a speaker that came in from, from the Netherlands. They were over on the island of Palm Beach, talking about, you know, retaining ponds and different types of things to actually deal with sea level rise in certain areas that are underwater. And I know that, that course is underwater quite a bit. I love to be able to involve those conversations while we talk about that land too, because you've got, you know, whole communities of people that live on there. You know, and, and with sea level rise and the new FEMA maps, you know, how do we shore up some of, you know, some of the neighborhoods? Not just the houses that are on the course, but also throughout that community. So I think that would be a good place to have some environmental discussions about sea level rise and what we can do as a city. Palm Beach is doing it, and there's some other cities in the Northeast that are working with this firm that are creating. You guys might have seen it, it was on PBS, it was on, I think, Nat Geo. They're doing some really cool projects around the world and that are playing into these amenities, parks, features and whatnot. I'm, I'm happy to say, I, I didn't think it looked so bad on the course because we had all the shutdowns, you know, when we, we, when we closed down recreation. So I kind of expected that to be a little bit worse off than I saw it. So that was some good news there. I don't know, I, you know, I'm looking forward to having future conversations about everything that was mentioned. Thank you. Commissioner Robinson?
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking forward to future conversations as well. Can we hope that that conversation will happen relatively soon? I mean, it's, it's a matter of a conversation. If we don't ask, if we don't converse, we don't we're not being to each other and the citizens.
No, I, I agree with you. I, I'd rather see us get moving along with the racial inequity stuff and some of the other things that we've talked about to see where our next steps are. So and we're in the middle of COVID too, but I, I think that, I think we can have everything done and taken care of. Just gotta breathe in between it all and I think we'll make some progress. Okay, you ready to move on there, Finance Director? I'm sorry, we held you up.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, let's do this.
Your pleasure. All right, page forty-three, Stormwater Fund. Relatively consistent over last year. A slight increase of about five thousand dollars for charges. Investment income, slight increase of eleven thousand dollars based on prior, prior activity. And then in year-to-date activity and use of fund balance, again, level funded or zero percent change. So again, slight increase of sixteen thousand dollars for total sources of funds. If you would turn the page please. Stormwater management on the expense side, again, putting the program and the categories, wages, et cetera, next to each other. The stormwater management piece, a slight increase of fifty-two thousand dollars. Street sweeping, an increase of about fifteen thousand dollars. The non-departmental is level funded and total sources of funds increasing sixty-seven thousand dollars from two point four million to two point five million dollars. Broken down into categories, wages, increase of ten thousand dollars, nine thousand dollars. Benefits, a slight decrease, and then operating expenditures increasing by about sixty thousand dollars. So overall, uses of funds going up from twenty-four point six to twenty-five point nine. If we turn this slide, you'll see, again, same presentation, but focusing on the graph to the right, you'll see wages pretty much. Again, wages, benefits and operating expenditures, and then the expenses by program to the right. Next page please. So overall, net sources over uses decreased by about fifty-one thousand dollars. But again, the fund is projected to have net earnings of ninety thousand dollars. And then the graph down below, you'll see that after the rate increase in fiscal year, for fiscal year twenty, we're projected basically to retain, retain a positive net sources for fiscal year twenty-one. So that, unless anybody has any questions, we can move on to the refuse fund.
All right, let's move on. I don't see any hands.
All right, refuse fund, page forty-eight, please. Really no changes in the revenue estimates. Total sources of, of funds are predicted to come in around six point two million dollars. Next slide please. And then the expenditures, again, the top half being expenditures by program and then the then by category in the darker blue shades. The administration activity is projected to be no change. Residential collection increased about forty-six thousand dollars up to three point two million dollars. Small change in commercial collection down to one point three million dollars. Recyclable again, small thirty-two thousand dollar decrease to five hundred and forty thousand dollars. Roll-off, small increase to two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And non-departmental, non-departmental being held even at nine hundred and twelve thousand dollars. By category, wages are going up at sixteen thousand dollars to one point six million dollars. Benefits decreasing at one hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars to eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And then the operating expenditures, where you see a large increase. Not a large increase, but the increase on the overall fund of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to three point eight million dollars. So overall, total expenditures again are projected to increase twenty-six thousand dollars from six point two, six point three million dollars to six, three, eleven. Next page please. Okay, again, graphical presentation. Numbers are pretty consistent. Pretty much even between the two years. And the last slide of the evening, page fifty-one, is the sources over uses. Here we're, it's going to be, there's a twenty-five thousand dollar revenue deficit that we're looking at at the moment. Again, by the time we get to the presentation with Stantec, I suspect that those numbers will be reconciled out. And we have a item for consideration about increasing the, the rates for the refuse fund. Because as you see, between fiscal year sixteen and fiscal year twenty-one, we've had declining net sources over, over that period of time. So we really have to start talking about a possible adjustment in the rates. So that's pretty much that, that fun. And so if there are, excuse me, any questions?
Vice Mayor Protem, you had your hand up?
Yes, I just wanted to thank Bruce for the presentation this evening. And when are we having our next meeting on this?
The, again, Stantec is scheduled to be down on the twenty-seventh. I forget the date, but before that, we're going to have a presentation on the Capitol piece. Thanks again, sir.
Excellent, thank you. I entertain a motion to return.
I have my hand up.
I'm sorry, it just went up there. Commissioner Hardy, go ahead.
Yep, so first of all, thanks for the presentation. It was very informative. I appreciate all the work that staff has done to get us to this point in the budget. It's not easy to put together a budget by October first, especially with all the other things that we have going around. And so I appreciate the work that staff has done to get us to this point, to where we can evaluate and look at different, you know, scenarios for us in the future. We had a conversation earlier in the workshop about our budget, about an expense line in our budget, which is the PBSO contract. And I raised an issue as to whether we should continue to spend that amount of money without reassessing whether that entire amount might be necessary to, to secure the safety of the public. I didn't perceive that to be a political conversation. I perceived it to be a budgetary policy, a policy pop. Excuse me.
Yeah, what, what's that got to do with anything? We've already gone past that.
Yeah, well, obviously we're in a budget workshop, and it was brought up that it either wasn't budgetary or that even if it was, I didn't, I didn't have a genuine reason for bringing it up. But my, my.
Back as an agenda item is what I said.
So my question to you would be, when, how, and with what resources would you like to see this conversation advanced, Madam Mayor?
During one of our regular meetings.
Okay, and, and, you know, obviously.
Be here for it?
I'm sorry?
Will you be here for it?
I will, I will. So how, again, how would you like this to proceed? Do you want this to be a discussion item? How do you, how do you want it to be, Madam Mayor? Because you, you appear to have strong feelings about where this conversation shouldn't be had, and so I'm, and, and how it shouldn't be had. So, so tell me what.
We were having our first major presentation on the general fund today. So we were just going through and getting our numbers through or whatever, and it was what it was. But I will tell you that if you'd like to bring it back as an agenda item, we'll have an agenda item on it. We'll have a discussion and we can have a vote on it. Whatever you want to do, you know, I'm open to it. It's, that's fine. There's just a time and place for everything. You know, that's, that's all I meant by it. It wasn't that I didn't want to have the discussion. I just didn't want to have it today in the middle of our first budget presentation.
Okay, on the question about how this conversation is going to be prevented, presented, we, we've had conversation about who can use staff time to get items on the agenda and to help formulate these ideas in order to make sure that we have a, a very professional conversation. Am I allowed to engage the professionals who work for the city to facilitate a, you know, an appropriately professional conversation?
You've never asked for my permission before. What should, why, why are you asking for it today?
Well, recent, well, you know, recently we've had issues, and I think the city manager and, you know, Madam Clerk can attest to this about how we get items on the agenda. You know, I, I don't know that anyone here, until very recently, wrote their own agenda memos. But that's something that we started doing this year, even though our, our rules and procedures haven't changed. We've started I, I know I've been writing my own memos to get items on the agenda. But there's also other things, you know, when you're, when you're tracking down these items and these issues, it helps to have a staff member there who knows what they're talking about so that you don't waste time on the dais. You can engage, you know, your council, you can engage your, your staff. And it's been said that I shouldn't be allowed, or that any one of us shouldn't be allowed to engage staff and use their expertise, which also requires using their time without the permission of this body or without having discussed it prior. So in order to have an appropriately professional conversation about this topic, I think it would be necessary to engage our, our staff so I can ask them questions and, and, and get their professional opinion about how to frame, you know, this, this conversation within the bounds of what's acceptable under the laws here in the state of Florida and on our contracts and agreements with PBSO and so on. And I just want to make sure that when I approach staff members about this, that I'm not going to get the answer, well, I, I can't, you know, you can't have my time on this.
Well, I've, I've never, I've never monitored anybody's time or heard anything about anybody's time.
I'm not saying you have, but you're aware of the conversations we've had on the dais about individual commissioners not being able to engage staff to help get items on the agenda. I, you know, that, that we're all aware of. We've had this conversation ad nauseam on the dais, so much so that we're now having to write our own memos. Now, if what you're saying is that I don't need the permission of this body to engage and approach staff and get their help to get this item on the agenda, then I will, I will certainly take that as a correction, and I hope staff will take that as a correction.
I would suggest that you work within the hours of the retainer that we pay our law for. So if we have X amount of hours that we pay in reference to our legal agreement, then it has to fit within the hours of that, of that agreement. So if you can't get the hours one month, you may be able to get the hours the following month. But stay within the hours that we pay for and don't incur any additional taxpayer money is needed to investigate these issues, work within their schedule and within, within their fee. That's all I meant. That, that would be probably just the common sense answer to it.
So, yeah, so.
You can't have everything tomorrow. You know what I mean? That's difficult.
I can, I can, I can work with staff during the normal workday when they're normally billing for us on this, on this issue. Is, 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 is that what you're saying, Madam Mayor?
And city manager, I mean, don't we have a certain allotment of hours that we have?
Let's, let's be more specific here, and I, y'all are talking several different things involving the amount of time the attorneys have spent on different issues and such. To this specific issue, we have a contract with the sheriff who has given us his offer back, basically at zero percent increase this year, providing policing services in the manner he's provided since he's had the contract. We kind of bumped into a discussion about trying to change the sheriff's MO, if you want to say, his method of, of going about policing. Last time when we had the conversation about the cameras issue. And it was kind of understood that the sheriff as a constitutional officer that does policing in the unincorporated county and with several other cities has a blanket approach to the services he provides, even though we have our own District fourteen. Generally, they move resources and staffing and people with, in and without the area. Changing that MO, which is what I think I'm understanding from Commissioner Hardy and sort of what I've been reading and trying to understand what's happening in other cities around the country, where money would be put into other activities that maybe traditionally, you know, fell under. that maybe traditionally, you know, fell under certain police responses and it's a different methodology. Would we have the ability to actually negotiate that in the contract? Um, I, 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 I don't know that the answer, you come to staff and, and how, we have a conversation about generating an agenda item. I'm not sure where that's going in, in reality, how it's going to affect the way the sheriff is doing. Now, having a conversation with the sheriff at the larger level of the county as a constitutional officer and his MO is to change across all his operations and we would be affected downstream by it. That's a different conversation and we took that methodology with the cameras. So
So, so, hold on one second. I, I just want, you know, the, the, the conversation that I'm trying to have is not a conversation about body cameras. This conversation I'm talking about right here, right? Yeah, it's, it's not a conversation about body cameras, although I would like to have that. I think there's a time and a place to have that conversation, not in a budget workshop, not in a budget context. I, I'm not trying to have a conversation right here in a budget workshop about whether he's gonna, you know, continue to instruct deputies to go after, you know, offenses for marijuana possession and, and other, you know, ticky tack things that increase the number of interactions that people have with the police. I'm not asking about pretextual stops or anything like that. I'm specifically asking about when can we have a conversation about whether that three, that thirteen point three million dollar figure is necessary and about whether there are other things we might want to spend a portion of that money on. That's, that's, it's a very narrow conversation. And, and, and yeah, so I, I agree, Mr. Bornstein, we discussed all those things. That's not what this thing is about. That's why I brought it up in the budget workshop. And so, yeah, I don't, I, you know, I don't, I don't, I, you know, I'm not trying to use staff time to go into those thicket, you know, that, that, that thicket of issues. This is about whether we can negotiate, really not, you know, so much negotiate, but you know, whether we can pare down our, our contract and spend that money on, on other things, which is a budget conversation.
Madam Mayor, to that point, I guess, as the person responsible to keep this process moving towards the state required timelines and to get, and make sure services are provided in the way that y'all, as the policy board want to ensure. In reality, is there an expectation that this conversation would yield a change to the contract that's currently offered by the sheriff? And I would argue pretty effectively, I think that is not a, a thing that you can affect in this current coming year's contract.
Well, well, I, I, I think that's kind of judging the outcome before it's happened. And, and, and really, I, I think that that's a, that's a decision for this policy board. I mean, baked into that assumption is the assumption that this policy board won't try. I mean, for example, over the years, we've added deputies to this contract. You know, we've, we've, we've done all sorts of things and we've had no problem adding deputies. You know, that hasn't been seen as an insurmountable ask of the, of the, of the, of the sheriff and as something that's not negotiable. So if the number of deputies is negotiable, then I'm wondering if we could negotiate that in the opposite direction in exchange for services that we would be able to provide to the community that, and hopefully do it in a way, obviously, you know, I'd only want to do it in a way if it did not increase crime here in the city. You know, violent crime, property crime, crimes that, you know, are not, you know, Joe Blow had a small amount of marijuana on him, right? And so that's a budgetary question. And we've discussed this before. We've had no problem discussing it at the drop of a dime when we're talking about deputies going in the upward direction. I'm asking whether we need all those, whether we need all that and whether we can take some of that money and use it, right?
Mad, Madam Mayor, just to clarify, there's the contract that we have and then there was the extra I think it's five deputies that come from a couple of different funds that we added because of requests we were receiving for downtown policing and some of the policing in the park and at the beach.
We had issues. We had crime issues.
And we, we added deputies and the sheriff gave us a price, which is a separate piece from the contract itself that we have for you. I just haven't seen any indication from the sheriff in public statements and in working with the sheriff's office over the years that there's an indication at this point in time that they're willing to consider a major change that maybe would come out of this conversation at this point in time. If that's something y'all want to talk about going forward, but I, I, I get a little nervous if there's an expectation that somehow you're going to change the contract at this point. That's why we always traditionally put it in the uncontrollable category. Because starting our own police department is the other option. I mean, he could very easily say you're on your own if you want to go down that path if we don't handle the conversation well. And I'm not trying to predetermine the conversation, Commissioner Hardy. I just
That's what's happening, right?
So, but you have to appreciate, let me, let me finish.
One minute, please.
You have to appreciate, I've been in this business for over twenty years and after a while, through experience and working and, and understanding people, personalities and how things happen and track records, you can appreciate where they're coming from and what's happening. But I know that with the sheriff, we're much better off than we were with our old police department.
But you know, that's not in dispute, Mr. City Manager. I'm not, I'm not disputing that at all.
All right, why don't we both move on? We've got a couple of other comments. Vice Mayor Protem, you're up first and then followed by the Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I agree wholeheartedly with the city manager. In fact, we've got, I think we're all aware of the, the three hour meeting that took place between Commissioner Hardy and Commissioner Robinson.
Point of order, point of order.
We spent two hours plus talking about how we wanted to get into the sheriff.
Point of order, point of order.
We walk away from the contract. We go through the contract.
Here, may I state my point of order?
These are things that we're not willing to
Eric, you're muted.
I beg your pardon?
Madam Mayor, you're still muted.
So, you know, I think, I think we know where this conversation is going to go.
And I state my point of order. You're muted and I can't hear what your, what your, what your response is.
Sorry, I couldn't unmute myself. It just kept going back mute.
May I state my point of order, Madam Mayor?
What is your point of order? Thank you. You know, everyone, you talk so much and everyone, every once in a while gets to talk a little bit. No, come on.
My point of order.
What is your point of order, sir?
My point of order, Madam Mayor, is that you said we were moving on from this topic.
No, I said, we're moving on to other people that have questions. That's exactly what I just said.
Oh, okay. All right. So we're on the topic. Okay. All right.
So you'll get your seventy fifth chance in a moment, okay?
Cool.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor Protem.
Thank you. I, I think I made my point clear. I think it's in my public record that there was a three hour meeting that took place recently between Commissioner Hardy and Commissioner Robinson, of which two hours plus was devoted to Commissioner Hardy's discussion about how he wished that we, as the five of us as a body could negotiate the contract with the sheriff and he wanted to do other things, you know, to get into that contract, which is all, you know, you know, double speak for, let's see what we can screw with this contract and defund the sheriff. And again, I don't think that I'm willing to have that conversation. I really don't think that I'm willing to, if, if being asked, you, you to allow staff to entertain any time with any one of us having that conversation right now about getting into the contract. I agree wholeheartedly with the city manager and I think we need to move on from this topic before, you know, it, it becomes something that we don't want it to become. The sheriff's office has done an excellent job for us. I think we all agree with that. And any attempt to, to choose their words wisely and say, we're going to, you know, take a look at this and move the money over here. You know, these are the same talking points that are being used across America right now in efforts to defund police departments. And I don't believe the city of Lake Worth Beach is in a position or has the willingness or need, if you will, to want to have that conversation or go down that road. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
And Madam Mayor, I wanted to make a point. I'm not interested in lowering the standards of safety for our residents in any way. I don't care what you call it. It's still called defunding. And as a native, I was here when we had gangs, we had a lot of things going on and we cannot afford to lower our standards, our health and safety for our residents and allow that to creep back into the city of Lake Worth Beach. So I'm not interested in having that conversation at this time either.
Okay, I'm not interested either. We should probably talk about the pool. And considering we've had the COVID and, you know, this pandemic and everything like that, we might want to look at taking some of the money from that pool project and moving it towards some other great projects in our community that we can talk about. I don't know. What do you think, Commissioner Hardy?
Yeah, I'll say two things. I didn't bring up, and it's, it's funny that Vice Mayor Amoroso's screen goes black every time I talk. But, you know, I didn't, I didn't bring up
I was going to the restroom, Sir.
It, it seems to happen a lot in every meeting. I'm, I didn't bring up defunding the police. I actually agree with Representative Jim, Jim Clyburn that I, I don't, I don't know if it's the most helpful slogan or the most, you know, effective piece of rhetoric. I brought up questioning an expense item on our budget here. And we do that all the time. And what I have learned to do, especially in the wake of George Floyd's death, is to question expense items and to question certain things that were once considered sacrosanct, completely untouchable. And, 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 you know, I, you know, obviously, you know, I, 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 I feel differently about that today than I felt in the past, right? And, you know, I also want to say, in response to what Vice Mayor Amoroso said, is that I never talked about lowering our standards for health and safety in the city. As a matter of fact, I stated repeatedly that I do not want to do anything that would increase crime in the city. I think the question is whether we can have the same crime rate that we have right now while spending less money on policing. And that isn't part of question as to whether policing is the only way to address crime. And, you know, I, I, I don't, I, I'm not putting words in Captain Bear's mouth, but I'm going to use something that Captain Bear has said to make a point that he perhaps did not anticipate. I have tremendous respect for Captain Bear, like the guy, love the guy, fantastic dedicated public servant here in the city of Lake Worth Beach. We love him. I hope he never retires, frankly. Because I, I think he's a, he's a great guy and a great asset to the city and to PBSO. But we get a presentation from him a few times a year. And in one of these presentations, he talks about the root causes of crime, the things that he cannot police our way out of. And what I'm asking is that rather than continuing to spend the same amount of money on policing, whether we can address some of those root causes of crime with money that we previously devoted. No one's talking about lowering our standards for that, that, you know, that is rhetoric. That is political speak. That is double speak. That is an equivocation. That is exactly the type of, excuse me, that is exactly the type of stuff that is unhelpful in this conversation. So I'm talking about us thinking out of the box about solving crime with our budget, about addressing crime with our budget. And it doesn't necessarily mean that it has to go all to PBSO. And so I appreciate the passion of my colleagues, Commissioner Maxwell and Amoroso. They were off base in their characterization.
Point of information. When did you move here, sir?
Twenty fourteen, April seventh, twenty fourteen.
Okay. So you weren't around for when we, when PBSO came into the community.
I have access to such things as Google and the internet and I can read the newspaper. I recognize.
You didn't live in this community when we were going through that process, did you?
I, no, I, 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 I frankly didn't. But I obviously recognized that there was a crime issue and that PBSO was brought in about ten years ago. And that over time, the crime issue has improved in large part because of frankly, an improving economy, but also and obviously because of the hard work of PBSO and their deputies and of the fantastic leadership that's come from both Captain Silva and Captain Bear and of, you know, the, 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 the frontline guys. I have not said here that with this budget question that I'm trying to ask is that we should go away from PBSO. That's not what this budget question is about. The question is, how much money should we devote to policing, which is in this case, the PBSO contract, right? So there have been straw men that have been thrown out there. Commissioner Hardy is trying to lower our standards for safety. I didn't say that. Commissioner Hardy seems to be suggesting
We already heard, we already seen that argument.
But, 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 but you just, you just brought up another straw man, which is, do you know how awesome PBSO has been? Are you, you know, you're, you're questioning, you know, PBSO? Well, so, so, so what's the point of asking me if I was here when we didn't have PBSO?
No, just, just like we talked about the electric utility and rate parity, okay? It's the same thing. When we came, years ago, when things were going on here, it was a whole list of issues and disincentives that people felt and issues and people did not feel safe in our community back then in two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve. They did not feel safe and there was a huge effort to bring in PBSO because of enormous gang activity, drug problems, distribution, pardon me?
How is that relevant to this conversation about exactly how much money we should devote?
Well, I, you know what? Can I have a minute and a half? I mean, you can have fifty if you like, but can I have a minute and a half to make a point without you interrupting me? Every time. It's just so rude. Okay. So what I was saying is that you have the ability to, you know, to have them come in, to completely get the gang activity out of the city, to do an amazing job for people to feel good again. And you know what happens? You love investment, you love development, right? So you want investment and development in your community, you've got to have safety. You have to have people and businesses that are going to feel safe in this community. And they came in and did just that. You talk to any of our PBSO officers, and this isn't just bragging now. Talk to any of them, the number of service calls that we have per square mile is more than probably double, and I will get the figures to share with you, than any other city, which is ten times the size of ours in miles. The number of calls that we have in crime is more in our seven square miles. Yes, and I want to do that report and bring that one for when we do it. I'm not interested
The relevant statistic would be probably per one thousand residents or per ten thousand residents. I think
I don't know. I'll bring it back to you because I wasn't prepared to have this discussion tonight. But I will bring back it when I have the exact information so that you can peruse it. In the meantime, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
We'll move.
Second. Come on, second. Second, I got a motion to adjourn. All those in favor of stating so by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries four to one. There we go.
You don't need a motion, Mayor.
The workshop, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Madam Mayor, I'd just like to thank the Finance Department staff, Bruce and the department directors for all the hard work. Thank you.
You got it. Thank you, guys. Awesome old staff, new staff. Bye.